Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a moment of silence for all of our troops overseas and at home? Thank you. Okay, we'd like to announce that we had an executive session this evening. We went over personnel, litigation, and property. Now I can move on to our announcements. Janice, would you like to start with announcements?
I'd be happy to. It's kind of a small audience this evening. It's just our heads of the different departments and we have two of our residents are here. I won't mention their names, but the rest of you come on out and come to a board meeting. Come out and find out what's going on in your township. It's nice to have other residents here in the building. It's okay if you could stay at home and watch on TV, but this is my most nervous time because I'm on YouTube or whatever. If they'd have told me that I was going to be on YouTube, I probably wouldn't have run for office. But it's well worth it because I love you residents. Thank you. And celebrate nicely. I know that, you know, elections was just on Tuesday. And I thank the fact that everybody's being calm and polite. We congratulate those that have won, Brian Monroe. Congratulations and for our president to be elected. So everybody just be calm and patient and this will all work out. Be nice with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Chuck?
I'd also like to thank or congratulate Brian Monroe on his win. And I'd like to thank Five Ponds for the great event they had on Sunday, the program. Bush was in great condition. It was a beautiful day.
Thank you. Judy?
No announcements today.
Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to hope everyone had a great Halloween. The kids enjoyed themselves and were safe. I want to thank all of our police and fire. I know today I was trying to talk to somebody on the phone. They were roaring up street road. It was nice to see, you know, that we know that we have some protection out during the day. So thanks to them as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'd like to also welcome everyone here and at home on this Thursday, November 7th, 2024, for our township, Warmminster Township meeting. The announcements I have tonight are for Parks and Rec. The Third Annual Holiday House Decorating Contest sponsored by the Warmminster Rotary Club is underway. Register your home before December 17th for either classic or extreme category. New in 2024, voting will take place online via the Parks and Recreation Facebook page between December 18th and 25th. The Second Annual Holiday Celebration of Lights, it was a big, big success last year. It will also be in partnership with the Warmminster Rotary Club. Will take place on Monday, December 2nd at 6 o'clock PM outside the administration building on Gibson Avenue. I also would like to thank all the department heads that are here today to participate into our budget presentation. I thank all of you for being here and being available for any questions. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have presentations. We don't have any presentations tonight. All right, no land use matters. Public comment. Does anybody have a public comment?
Hi, Pat Boyle, 6310 Centennial Station. I just want to take a moment and thank all the poll workers on Tuesday. I'm telling you, the further I get from 30, the longer 16 hours is, and that is a tough day. And the people working inside, the lines in the morning were exceptionally long. The people coming in, they kept their cool. They kept working the process and kept moving along. And all of a sudden, they were caught up. And it was a long day. The counting went swiftly. It was so nice. There was no conflicts inside or out, and it was just a great day. So thank everyone for what they did on Tuesday.
Thank you for your great comments, Pat.
Great comment. Thank you.
John, you're up.
John Prio, 674 Joseph Avenue. Sorry I didn't make it last month, but you know, I have a few questions. I brought my notes with me today.
We missed you, John.
I know you did. So I got a whole list here. And you don't want there's nothing on there. So things look like they're going pretty good. So that's all I have to say.
Awesome.
You made our day. Thanks, John. That was nice. That's very nice. All right, moving along to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to consider the approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated October 10th, 2024, and to consider a resolution for the RSSP Act 537 Special Study Update for Sanitary Sewer System by the Warmminster Municipal Authority. Also to consider a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain tax records from 2017. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from our folks that are here today? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have our finance report. And Chuck Haybuck, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I'd like the approval of a bill list and supplemental bill list. Bill list, October 31st, 2024, in the amount of $714,938.72. And the supplemental bill list dated, I don't have that one, for $212,288.97. The total of $927,227.69.
Thank you, Chuck.
So moved.
So, yes, may I have a motion?
I'll give a motion.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Chair votes aye. Okay, we have no unfinished business.
We have a finance report?
He just, he just did it. Okay. All right, new business. This is our big item on our, on our agenda tonight. Authorized to advertise the 2025 budget as drafted by our financier director, John Ramey.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I may, could you give us the financial statement for September?
This is going to be the quickest one ever because I think you're going to
That's what we like.
You're going to hear way too much of me coming up, so.
Perfect.
Through the end of September, we're looking really good, seems prior months. The most positive part is we're only at 60% of budget on the expenses. This time last year, we were at 64%. So we're still tracking similar to last year, but expenses are down compared to last year overall. So besides that, I'm just going to say it's pretty much the same as last month.
Good. Thank you.
And we're going to get started with the 2025 proposed budget presentation. Definitely have to start with giving a lot of thanks. Starting with Tom, going down to all the department heads that are here that couldn't make it tonight. I'm purposely going to use the words "we" and "us" because this was not something I did. It was something we did as a township as a whole. So as we go through it, you're going to hear a lot of "we" and "us." And it is a little bit of a different format than we've ever had in a presentation. What I wanted to do was show everyone how we developed the budget. And as we go through developing the budget, some of the highlights of that part of the budget. So this is going to be each step that we take and then a little bit how we ended up. So we're going to start with, and of course, that Oh, you gotta be kidding me. It's worked all day long.
Jill, did you take the batteries out?
John, what did you do to her?
I didn't do it. Probably got into green shirt.
It's got to be the computer. Because I'm getting the leaves up there. All right, that's fine. You can start there. All right, so the first thing we do, starting in July, this is how long this budget actually takes to develop. We start with employee wages and benefits. We start with what we call the salary schedule, which is every employee that we have, including elected officials, the guys running the cameras here, all the way down to the pages, the part-time pages over at the library. So we have individual line items by department on a schedule. So we start with what their 2024 salary is. And then we work over to 25, and then we start building from there. So starting with the salary, we can do a calculation on taxes, any kind of pension costs and workers' compensation. All of these are directly tied to wages, so it's all formula-based. So all of these go directly to line items. And then from there, since we have individuals, we're actually able to build from all the medical expenses, like for health insurance, prescription, vision, dental. These are all, again, individual basis that we're able to build from the ground up. Disability insurance, that's short-term, long-term disability, and life insurance. So we're able to pretty much zero-based budget this, this part of the budget and just go right from nothing and start building. What this actually totals up to be, what I like to see, the biggest and best assets the township has, which is in employees, not just because I am one, but that totals over $16 million once you work in the MMOs.
Sir John, if I may stop you for one minute and explain what formula-based means. So what you're saying is that these are all formulas based on standards that were developed by professionals?
Yeah, so.
So we're not making it up. It's formula-based.
The taxes are 7.65%. That's the FICA and Medicare tax. The pension, we know what everyone's pension contribution is. Workers' compensation, we get that from our workers' compensation company based off of salary. So as soon as I plug it into one spot, everything is computed and flows directly to individual line items in the budget. So that total is just over $16 million that we completely zero-based budgeted. What that actually translates to, and this is probably the most important number, 54% of our operating expenses are zero-based budgeted. And that's just from employees and benefits. So this is completely, and a lot of these numbers, and we'll make some highlights in a minute, we don't have much of a choice on. So that's kind of how we start the budget with the salary. So some of the highlights are next year in 2025, we have 47 police officers budgeted. That's three more than the prior year. We have five paid firefighters. I know we just swore in the two new ones, but we have a full year of five firefighters budgeted. That puts our employee total up to 105 employees. And now what I was saying before about them not exactly being, having any wiggle room, 83% of them are union employees. They're subject to union contracts. So with that, we have three different unions that we bargain with. We have 2025, and then we also have 2026. So we have consistency over the next two years of budgets where we know what these expenses are going to be. And it'll help us in the future, even past '26, as we're going into negotiations in '26 to try and do the next couple of years also. So once we have the employee section of it done, we move over to the expenses. And we start with expenses mainly because I don't want revenue and money coming in to decide how we want to service the residents. So what we want to do is say, this is the service we want it at what level, and that's how we want to decide what our expenses are going to be. And they kind of work backwards into the revenue. So we start with the expenses here. Now here's, I try to make it as readable as possible. I don't want to be stereotypical accountant of tiny spreadsheets that no one can actually read. So I try to shrink it down as much as we can. So here's an individual line item of part of what I give every department head. And we start with, like, this is office supplies. The reason I'm only showing one, we have about 800 individual line items in our budget. So I figure an example of one is good. So going from there, we can, so we'll just work our way over. Of, I give as much detail as possible. So this is the actual of 2017 through 2023. That's what's available in our accounting system. So everyone gets exactly what the detail is per line item. And then it, then there's a average number. And then average without the high and low, in case there's a one year of extra expenses or real low expenses. So we do an average without the high and low throughout that time period, the 2024 budget. And then a column for them to put the 25 budget in any notes. The notes are for, if you're going to kind of go outside of this range, this is the direction we go in, of the seven-year average, the seven-year average without the high and low or the prior year budget, have a little note there. It will save time for going back and forth. The departments only get what's their section of the budget, so it's not overwhelming on an individual basis. So that 800 line items becomes a lot smaller when you're only looking at your sections. This is actually one of the better examples of, all right, the seven-year average is $1,300. But you can see how from 2017, and of course, that just dies, it goes from $2,400 down to $600. On average, without the high and low, we're just on their $1,200. $1,000 is a really good budget, and that's the budget for 2025. We're able to justify how this is stretched out into the future. It doesn't make sense to zero-base budget. I love the office supplies, the example of how many reams of paper are you going to use? How many boxes of paper clips? It just gets too time-consuming and is not worth the effort. Where we could do something like this and build from this kind of historical information, because we are very consistent on how we spend money. So some of the highlights for the 25 budget. In total, total operating expenses are just under $29.5 million. And you're going to hear me talk about operating expenses that term a couple of times in the presentation. What that is, is the total expenses with no capital involved. So these are just what it takes on a day-to-day basis to keep us moving forward. So within that, just under $30 million, we have 11 total funds. And the point of funds is, and this is for everyone's education, there's, it's to segregate money. So the money that comes in for Parks and Rec cannot be used for police or fire, something like that. So everyone has their own little bucket, and it has to stay in their, in their fund so that they can operate. We can't take money from one to the other. So of the 11 funds, we have a general fund. That's the admin, police, public works, LNI, the general administration of the township. We have seven special revenue funds. That's ambulance, library, parks, sanitation, fire, highway, and liquid fuels funds. They're the ones that, their money that comes in for those specific purposes has to be used for those purposes. They can't be used for general purposes or debt service or anything like that. Speaking of debt service, we have one debt service fund, probably the most self-explanatory fund you could ever have. Pays the debt of the township. One proprietary fund, that's the GOF fund. That's a business-type activity that actually runs like a business where we're looking for profits. And we're allowed to actually take those profits and distribute them as a shareholder of that one business. So we actually do transfers from the GOF fund to the general and to the capital so we can keep doing projects throughout the township. And one capital fund, again, pretty self-explanatory. That's how we pay for any of the capital projects and assets that we have. So moving on to revenues, before I click over, because it's a little, it's a lot. It's a little hard to read. I tried my best to make it readable for everyone in the room. But I just want to walk through, because this is how the revenue side, there are schedules that are part of the budget that will be literally included. They are part of the actual budget document. For 90% of the revenues, there's a schedule to support where that number's coming from and why that number was chosen. So here's an example of real estate taxes. So just working our way down, we have the assessed value. This is from September 1st, '24. Every month, the county gives us what the assessed value is. Anything after 9-1, if we were using the 10-1, we'd probably get that around October 15th. It's just not enough time for us to work those numbers into the budget. And you'll see, they don't change that much. So then we subtract out any kind of appeals and adjustments. Appeals are anyone that thinks that their property is assessed too high. Adjustments, probably the biggest one that I see on a monthly basis, people filling in pools. That immediately lowers your assessed value. The county sends it back, and we have to do a refund check from when the pool's filled in. So we just automatically take $50,000 per fund off of each of them. So then we have the net assessed value times a tax levy. So we have an estimated gross tax. One of the things we do is we offer a 2% discount. And we have such a good tax collector that a lot of people take advantage of that 2%. So what we do is we actually work that 2% into the overall. This is part of being conservative on the revenue side of just saying, I'd rather be underestimating how much revenue is coming in and then, as opposed to going, oh, wow, this number came in. We can't afford something because we're missing revenue. So once we take that, we actually know, these are the numbers that flow into these six individual funds for real estate assessment. One thing I'd like to point out is how much the assessment changes per year. I know I say this every year and I will keep saying it. Bucks County hasn't reassessed in 50 years. So the standard assessment right now, we kind of use a number of $26,500. It's not really a good assessment. But the way it actually works is 1 mil in 2024, using the same formula, was $340,000. In 2025, it's $341,000. It's only up $732. So anyone that thinks, oh, the real estate taxes are going up. That's how you can pay for all these expenses. Love seeing that. It's not realistic that we can rely on real estate tax assessments going up on a year-by-year basis. This year, when you take the $732, times it by the 24.0% tax mileage, that was less than $18,000, or $17,612, just for the increase in assessment value. It's not a lot of money. In total, that worked out to be 0.06% of our total revenues, the increase in value. So it's a lot of work for less than $18,000 increase in revenue on this schedule. The only other schedule I know, this one's going to be hard to read. I just wanted to show this as an example. We have these schedules for a lot of our taxes, earned income, local services, business privilege, mercantile tax, cable franchise. What it is, it's, it's a history, 10 years of history of what is actually happening and kind of how we came up with what the budget number that flew, that came over to the individual line item. So again, please take a look at the schedules. That's where a lot of the money comes from, or line items come from. Moving on to some of the highlights of the 2025 budget on, under revenues. Total revenues were over $30,600,000. So if we remember back a couple of slides, the revenues are higher than the expenses for operations. So what I can say is we're not using any reserves to operate the township. And I think that's where the township got in trouble a couple of years ago of
That's great.
using reserves.
More than a couple of years ago.
Yes.
So this is something that, like, very important. On a year-by-year basis, revenues should equal expenses for operations. And whatever you have left over, that's what goes to capital and projects. And that's the way this budget is prepared. It's the last couple of years.
Yeah, that practice stopped in 2019.
Yes.
And since 2020, we have not been using that type of revenue or excess to operate the township.
Yep. And then just a couple of other highlights within the general fund. Increase all the FIC Act 511 taxes. For anyone that doesn't know, that is the transfer tax, EIT, LST, business privilege, mercantile tax. These are the ones that, they're schedules of why we are able to responsibly raise those taxes in the budget to pay for the current year expenses. Again, I still think there is room. It's very conservative on the revenue side. So I think this is a good idea that you're able to raise them, but still be kind of reasonable for future years. Increase the permit and rental license fees. This is where I will begin my shout-outs to Michael Walsh in the back. Having a full-time employee over at that department who was able to go into detail of what's happening and looking in the future and saying, yeah, we could raise these and I could support these numbers. That, that was huge because that was, we were missing someone that was really in-depth in the department. We increased
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Hey, I second what you said about Mike, but you said the fee increases, the revenue increased, the fees are staying the same.
Yes. Yeah, the budgeted revenue increased. Increase use of rate stabilization. I'm sure pretty much no one knows what rate stabilization is. So a quick history of this before you fall asleep. We have two insurance companies for our health and workers' comp that we're part of self-insurance pools. And what they do, it's pretty much, townships got together, made their own insurance company. So there's no CEO bonuses, dividends being paid out. So what they do is they look at the end of the year, say, we have this extra money. Let's give it back to the members. So we have kind of a bank of rate stabilization funds that is available to us. A few years ago, right, I think it was in 2021, we had to drain all of it. Then we were able to start, watch our spending, lower the spending, take a better look at our revenues. And we were able to get two years without using them at all. So we were able to kind of save up this bank. What we're using now, and which is always my goal, is to use less than 50% of it. Because if we use 50% this year, we know that the following year, we have another 50%. So it's not just this year's budgeting. It's kind of going into the, into the future. And assuming they've always given more money, but assuming it's not there, we know that what's coming down the line. So we at least have two years' worth of rate stabilization to keep the budget flowing the way it is.
What was our medical insurance increase for '25?
For '25, it was 5.8%. And by the use of rate stabilization, we were actually able to kind of lower that to an easier level to swallow.
So before you even go any further, John, I mean, I think it's important to let, to all the residents know that, you know, our revenues are stable, so we know what to expect. And our expenditures are less, and we have a little bit excess. Because if the economy decides to have a downturn, we still have to operate and provide the same amount of services to the residents of this, of this town.
And 54% of our budget is employee costs, other union contract.
So it makes no sense to spend every nickel and some.
Yep. And then
Thank you.
This point is probably one of my favorites, and I've been looking forward to pointing this one out. Never mind some interest income. So I find this important because one thing we did not do is we didn't raise our expectations of interest income, even though we're making a lot of interest income. From personal experience, the last time we had, I had money in the kind of investment that we did, the pandemic hit, interest rates dropped to zero, the accounts closed. It was like, oh, wow, we, we started relying on it, so I never want to do that again. So what we were able to do is not rely on it, but look at it as a plus whenever we need the money. I have a few examples of unexpected items that came up, and it was great that we had this money. Especially in the Parks Department. We had unplanned cost for the site work over the new playground. The deeper we dogged, the more we realized, oh, we need more dirt to put back.
And I remember.
The kind of thing. --the kind of thing. You know, Jess came into my office every day, like, oh, and it was like, the overages were reasonable compared to the total cost of the project. And I was able to look at this interest income and go, you can afford it. The same thing, as we were doing that, looking over at Safety Town Fencing, kind of looked at that and said, oh, wow, that's getting older, the vertical bars, they're starting to get a little bit wider. And I like to think of it as, like, every 80s shoe that ever existed of, like, oh, we'd never had to get to the point where a kid's head was stuck and we had to butter it off to get it out.
Yeah, right.
And not to mention, it was residential-grade fencing.
Yeah. So we were able to get the proper fencing in there. Again, we made enough in interest income in the Parks Fund alone that we were able to afford it. And then, also with all this interest income, the chief actually brought something up. We had an opportunity, and it was great to have the money to say, yes, go ahead and do it, of just buying vehicles. It was a great sale at the time, and we were able to say, yes, this is the perfect time, go ahead, we can afford it. So having this extra money in the bank is huge. With this interest, like, I know I've been trying to keep it quiet over the last couple of months, as of the end of October, this is 15 months in this high-yield money market at Univest, we have made $1,034,000 worth of interest.
All right.
So over $1 million.
Woo! That's great news.
And a big part of it's going into the capital fund, but it's being divided within other funds that had some extra money, the golf fund, the debt service, parks, all of it. So it's great that we're actually able to keep making money, and when issues come up, we can say, we can afford these unbudgeted expenses because we have this unbudgeted revenue.
Thank you for that.
So it's always good to have some liquid cash, in other words, right?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And I want to thank Jess as well, because you made a great face, which reminds me of when she, I mean, Jess is fantastic, because she spends money like it's her own. So she really does take care of the residents.
And with quality equipment and the design and everything, but like, again, like Ken said, you use the money like it's your own, and we do appreciate that. Thank you.
The best is when Jess comes in and goes, and I'm like, do I need to sit down for this? She's like, yes, you should. I'm like, that's not, I don't know, that's not a sit-down issue. So, once we have the wages, the expenses, the revenue all set up, then we're able to say, all right, what are we expecting to have left in reserves? And that's when we move over to capital. So these are just a couple of the capital projects we were able to complete, when I say just the four of them here. The Ben Wilson Center, the HVAC and the generator. This is a very important project, because it is a shelter, an emergency shelter. If someone needs to go over there, we want to be able to say, hey, the power's off your house, there's power working there because we have a generator. That's very important. And if it's cold, we have heat there. Two very important things, I would say. So, between that, another huge project we had was the Winter Park lighting improvements. Again, this is something, anyone that played sports, it's almost more dangerous to play with bad lighting than no lighting at all. So seeing a ball come in and out, so better lighting is always safer, but also lighting in the parking lot, so people can get to their cars safer. This is going to be a big part of our capital. It's all about making things safer for residents and the people using our facilities. It still goes on to roadway paving. Again, this is something I always like to touch on, because over four years, we've done 40.4% of all the roads since '21. It was an investment of $6,893, so almost $7 million have gone in the roads over four years. Along with the roads--
So that's, that comes out to about roughly 45 miles of the 111 miles of road that the township owns?
Yes.
In four years?
In four years.
Fantastic.
Incredible.
And, coming with roads, also comes the ramp upgrades to make everything ADA compliant. At the end of 2024, we would have done 255 ramps throughout the township, and that's at a cost of just under $1.7 million over four years.
We always like to remind everybody, that's an unfunded mandate.
Yes. I mean, it's great to do the roads, but eventually we have to do the ramps, too.
Yeah.
And it's just an additional cost that we have to eat eventually.
To comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
That's correct. I'm not saying it's not a necessity, I'm just saying it's, somebody told us what to do and said, go figure out how to pay for it.
But they look amazing, they did a great job.
People should know that's why we have ramps to nowhere, some of them. Yeah. Unfunded mandate for a ramp to nowhere.
And, so this is kind of one of those weird facts you learn in government, what the little dots are leading off the ramps into the intersection, Craig, you're not allowed to sight.
I know, sir.
So, it's not for wheelchairs or anything like that. I never realized it was for blind people, to know that they weren't walking into the street. So--
There you go.
--stupid fact of the presentation.
Right on for your feet.
But looking for--
Learn something new every day, right, John?
Yep. Full of stupid facts we've gone through. But moving forward on the capital projects to next year, and this is where it kind of gets something, I picked a couple of projects from each department of what we're looking at, and we're going to hit Jessica Fox up again immediately, the walking paths. Throughout the parks, they needed to start getting worked on.
Can I just interrupt? This is a list of candidates for projects. None of these projects--
Thank you. Yes. So, the walking paths, again, all of these, it comes down to safety. People biking, walking, we don't want anyone to get hurt, so it's something that we want to start looking into, is getting the, all the paths upgraded. The library carpeting, now that we have the new bathroom project done, the new rooms, which look fantastic, now we want to start upgrading some of the other parts of the library. So Peter's given the carpeting, it's step one, then we'll do the furniture on top of it, and just keep upgrading our library throughout the years.
But since he didn't show up, we might sell to another department.
Yep.
No, Peter, trust me, that won't happen.
We got you, Peter.
So, we'll move on to Mike Cetera in the back. For, the big one is the golf club renovations. We had the whole presentation on that, but some of the other big projects they got going on, is to look at all the bunkers. I think they're fine, they eat my ball perfectly, great, as you guys know--
Yes.
--we played on Sunday together.
You plug it nicely in there.
Yeah. But we did get a report from the USG, yep, saying, like, so it was a free report that we got, and they, very little recommendations, but the bunkers were one of them, to keep our golf course at the top of the class for the state. So that's something that's in there. Another one was covering the tee project. So the driving range, putting some tees, some covers over it, so if it's raining or it's cold, we could, you could actually still go to the driving range. So in a way, it's more of a money-making effort as opposed to just doing something for safety.
Can I ask a stupid question for those of us that are not golfers, just in case there's anyone at home that doesn't know? Is the bunker the same thing as the sand traps?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So I read that report, by the way, and, boy, they gave us, I mean, those guys do a fantastic job. I mean, other than some minor, some repairs to the bunkers, I mean, we got a really, really good redo.
Everything seemed just like maintenance items, as opposed to, this was an actual capital item.
Yeah, so hats off to Mike Cetera and Spirit Golf and everybody that works over there.
While we're on the golf course, this is probably one of my most important points, is no tax money ever goes to the golf course. They are self-sufficient, it's their own business. If anything, we take money from the golf course to give to the other departments. So, all of these projects are paid for by their own fund. Going on to the roadway improvements, this is Angie McAdams' department, we're looking at doing the Speedway next year.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
This is in connection with the WMA's project, we give Tim a little credit there, just trying to get that done. We actually have $1.5 million budgeted for paving next year. Some of it's coming from liquid fuels, and some of it is coming from the general capital. But this is another thing, we want to keep rolling on these roads and trying to keep paving as much as we can.
Thank you.
Some other items, for the chief in the back, police current office computers, they're completely out of date. We have to upgrade them to keep our certifications. So these are two big items. We do have grant money, and all of these projects throughout the capital, we are always looking for grant money, for, to try and fund it. The one thing we don't want to do is, like, grant money determine our projects. This is a cart and horse situation of--
That's right.
--this is the project we want to do, now find the money, not, hey, we have some money coming in, let's do a project.
Yes.
So, then, finally, another big thing we're doing is, throughout the departments, is just upgrading our vehicles still. So we have police vehicles, public works, and parks vehicles all in the budget, and this comes to a grand total, this is my final animation, of over $6.2 million, all these projects. There is a way more detailed list in one of the budget schedules, it's Schedule N. So, anyone that takes a look at the budget, if you look at N, that will detail these projects plus other ones that I did not mention.
And I think our chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our body cams have been funded, right? They're all paid for?
For the next five years.
For the next five years?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, I'd like to thank, I think it was Brian Monroe that got us that funding, right? Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
So my final two slides are just going to be general ones that I feel are always very important to put up there. First one is going back to the debt service. At the end of 2025, we'll have just under $12 million worth of debt, what the annual payment is. The final payment is 2041, but the one thing to remember, this debt is 1.45% interest. We borrowed money at the very low of the market, so at this point, it's practically free money compared, if you go to borrow now, you're looking at 4%, 5%. So this is really good, good money. And part of that $12 million, 980,000 of it's going to be paid for by the golf course. So really, the general debt, we're only looking at about $10 million that's outstanding at the end of next year.
That was a great move, John, with getting that lower interest rate.
And the one thing we did was, when we sold the storm sewer system, we transferred money from the general over to the debt service fund, so that the current mileage for debt service will never have to be raised to cover this particular debt. So right now, if we don't borrow a single dollar, we don't have to worry about raising taxes for debt service going forward. If anything, we made the proactive move of taking some of that money and start making interest off of it with the Univest account. So we're actually making more than what we need for this current debt, assuming eventually we will have to borrow money like every other municipality usually does.
I do believe our bond rating will be improved, too.
100%.
Absolutely.
And of course--
Makes it easier.
No budget presentation is complete without seeing a dollar bill broken down by--
There we go.
There we go.
So, this is broken down by an assessed value of $26,500. Kind of what we think an average house is assessed at in Bucks County for Warner's or Township. In total, the taxes would be $5,775, and that's between the local, county, and school tax, but only 11% of it comes to the township. That's $53 a month. And what you get for that, police, fire, public works, LNI, parks, admin, and most importantly, the finance department. All comes out of that, $638.
So that's quite a feat that we can pull off every year, that for all those services and all the public works projects, the paving, the great parks we have, the great police force we have, fire department, everything else that we do, that it only costs, the average cost to a resident is only $638 a year.
Yeah.
That's incredible.
And, I'm not going to say that the county and school do not provide very important services, but I think you get the most bang for your buck at local government. So that being said, the most important slide, we're going to, the '25 budget, operating budget, will continue to provide high-level services with no tax increase.
Yay!
So this will be four straight years with the exact same mileage, just going back to '22 through '25, note, the exact same mileage. So that's a really impressive thing, considering if you look at the capital that we're doing, the amount of reserves we were able to build through that time. Again, I can't take any credit, I'm going to give it to Tom and all the department heads of just buckling down and saying, this is what's important to us, of building reserves in these projects and doing it responsibly.
I think when we cut back on all the spending that we were doing, and concentrated on budgeting and financing, we got you as our finance director, we got the interest rate, a lower interest rate, our bond rating went up, we don't have to increase the taxes, and yet we're providing amazing services. You said all the improvements in the parks and the rec department, in our, for our roads, we've never paved that many roads.
We were averaging three miles a road before we took--
Yeah, it was three miles, three miles a year, or whatever. So this is incredible, we've hired more police officers, we have more police officers now than when I was, than when I was, when I first started on the board. We hired firefighters, we never did that before. And all of this without a tax increase, I want to thank you for this phenomenal presentation, John. I like the way you explained everything, and I'm so glad that we are at this point financially in this township.
So let's keep in mind that when, when I got elected, we were right in the face of a $2.5 million deficit, which you cannot have, and the only, federal government's the only one that can have a deficit, we had to balance the budget. So in five years, we've created a $14 million surplus, I believe?
The investment account, we have it, we're $18 million.
$18 million?
Yep.
We have, when I started, I think there were 38 police officers, now with this coming year, we'll have--
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Budgeting for forty-six.
Budgeting for forty-six. You know, we're paving miles and miles a road, our parks, we've got, we removed all the blighted houses in the Shenandoah Woods, and we're working on that project. It's just incredible, the things that we were able to accomplish in those five years. And I want to thank Bill McCauley for building the foundation.
And if, when you really look at the details, it does show, from the board to all the departments, the importance of safety, going just from the hires, but also the capital stuff. I know people don't think about how safe a road is, but a paved road is a lot safer than an unpaved road.
Absolutely.
So that's all the way down to the paving, the curb ramps, the parks, everything. It's all about safety, and that's kind of the importance that--
And the paving is good, too. It wasn't so hot before, you know, so--
I mean, looking at the Ben Wilson Center, that's a huge deal, like, what if the power was out in the township, then we'd have a generator over there. So--
Yes.
Oh, I almost forgot, any questions?
Just a comment.
And we have a really safe playground, too.
Yes.
I love the playground.
So the only, the only other comment is, we're going to be posting this for all the residents to look at.
Do we need to make a motion that we've--
Yes, I'm going to do that in a second, Tom. Will you please announce what, how the process is going to go with the date, so people know?
Oh, I'd love--
Just Ken just brought it up.
We will have copies, bound copies, in the township, in this building's lobby, there'll be a copy at the library, and there will be a copy online. So, what we're going to ask the board to do tonight is approve the authorization of the advertising of what John just presented and what's in the books--
Right.
--and what's going to be available in the library and the lobby. So that's our draft budget. Budget is drafted.
Yes.
Then we put a notice in the newspaper saying that we've done so, and it's available, where I just said. And after 20 days, we get to adopt the budget, which we were, I'm going to ask the board supervisors to do formally at the meeting on December 5th.
Okay, Tom, may I--
One other comment, if I may, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
I believe this is the first time, since I've been here in 25 years, that we've had this budget done this early.
It has. I've been attending meetings for 40 years, and that's never happened, so, yes, congratulations.
So well done to you and your staff and everyone else involved.
Thank you very much for all of you. You all did a great job. Everybody. All our department heads, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. For all of us, we are, we are very thankful. So may I have a motion to authorize to advertise the 2025 budget as drafted?
I was just gonna question.
No, no, we'll do the motion first.
I need a motion first.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions from the board?
None.
Any questions from the public? See, and none? Motion passes.
We got a vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Chair votes aye. Thank you, 5-0, thank you. All right, so we have no unfinished business-- All right, so we have no unfinished business. I'm sorry, we passed that. Professional reports, Township Manager, Tom Scott, thank you.
I was going to mention the golf course report. I stole your thunder, Tom, but go ahead, you can go into a little word. John Ramey did, too. Yeah. But, and it dovetails nicely with the capital request from Five Ponds to do the, it had to be there, anyway.
I have to say, Mike, I've been in every one of those sand traps, I think, by now. They could use a little, I probably lost more sand for you, we're going to have to put it back in. But the course looks great.
I just want to point out, our special guests tonight, from right to left, the Emergency Services Management Director, Joe Veltin, he's also the Fire Marshal. John Ramey, who's behind the voting booths, Mike Walsh, our Director of Planning.
Yes.
Mike Atara, Director of Golf at Five Ponds. Jessica Fox, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and Jim Donnelly, the Chief of Police.
Thank you to all of, and all of you that are impressed in our department heads, I want to thank you also.
And they all do a great job, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, we want to thank them for being very diligent and spending their arm, taxpayer, resident money wisely, and getting the best bang for the buck. It really is, it really is impressive, the job that you guys do, and gals. Folks, I guess, people tell me to say no.
I just wanted to make a short comment, I know we're interrupting Tom again, but our main focus here at the Supervisory Board is for the safety and the improvement of the lives of our residents. Within our means, and I think we have exactly done that, I mean, you see all the improvements and everything that's happened, you have to say, somebody's doing something right. So thank you to all of you that helped make this possible. All right, so Tom, you have anything else you'd like to talk about?
That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Next meeting?
Do you want to do Solicitor's Report first? Before I jump ahead?
Oh, well, okay, all right, you could do that, you could do that. Okay, sure, you're done with everything you wanted to say, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce Scott Holberg from Flagrant Associates.
All right. Follow up some other things, happy Halloween, wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, I mean, I talked to nothing executive session, you heard what I had to say, but wish you all, we're not, you know, we're not going to see you for the second time this month, but you know what, it'll be nice.
We'll miss you, too.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right, now I'd like to introduce our engineer.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Usually it's a joke or something.
Aren't you the owner?
Gilmore and Associates.
I'm retiring. You have our November engineers report, I actually have no updates. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Your report says it all there, Craig, thank you.
Yes, it does, I thank you for the synopsis that you both sent, because it's great to know, especially with all the improvements, with capital improvements, and I like that, it's very.
I promised I wouldn't go over that whole list, and we'd be here.
We love it, thank you.
There's a lot going on.
We read it.
It's all good, it's all good.
All right, Tom, you're up again.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, we don't have any more business to conclude prior to December, so I would ask the board supervisors for permission to cancel the scheduled meeting for Thursday, November 21st. No objections.
No objections.
Which means we will then have our next meeting on Thursday, December 5th, at which we will have, we will ask the board to adopt the budget formally. For 2025, we have some new police officers to swear in, and we're going to have a presentation from Andrew McAdams, the Public Works Director.
Okay, very good, Tom.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor's comments, Janice, would you like to start?
I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in today, it's, I like watching when he gives the budget report because he gets so excited, and he's so, his facial expressions are great. But thank you for coming out, everybody, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, be safe, enjoy your family, have a good evening.
Chuck?
I'd also like to thank John for a great report, I'd like to thank all the department heads for their input and all their dedication to the township, thank you very much. Also, have a great Thanksgiving, and go Birds Beat Dows.
Judy?
Oh, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, have a good time with your family, and thank all of you who participate in our township.
Thank you, Judy.
In our township.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Yep, next Thanksgiving, I'm thrilled that we got this budget done, because I know for the, in 2020, 2021, 2022, we spent lots of time to get where we are now, and I really appreciate all the hard work from everybody involved.
And piggyback on, Mr. Hayes said, all that hard work obviously paid off. I'd like to thank everyone today, all the department heads that are here and all the ones that aren't, you're doing a phenomenal job, and we are grateful for that. Would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, it's my favorite holiday of the year. No commercialism, you're just there with your family, friends, and you're just grateful for what you have. And that's why I love that holiday, and I hope the rest of you enjoy it also. So thank you, and have a good evening. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.